Let me call the meeting to order and welcome everybody this evening. We've got a packed house. And so, thank you for joining us this evening for a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting. This meeting is called and convened this evening, August the 27th, 2019. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask if you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and then Councilmember Kimbo Booker will offer an invocation to council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you again, unbothered, we know how, thanking you and praising you for this beautiful day you've allowed us to see. Thank you for the rain, thank you for the sunshine that you've given us on this week. We also ask you that you come into this meeting and allow nothing to be said or done that is not in your will or your way for our city to beautify it and to make us better. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
As we always do, we have a time that we set aside for public forum. This is an opportunity for citizens of the city to address the council in regards to items that are on the agenda later this evening. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum?
No, sir.
With that then, council, we will move to the minutes of our council meeting held August the 13th, 2019. I'll entertain a motion if they be received.
So move.
Have a motion in second. Any items of note for the clerk? Here we go, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Alba?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we have a special recognition tonight, and I think that we will know here pretty quickly what it's all about because we are joined this evening by the City of Greer Six and Under All-Star Rookie League Baseball Team. And I think we have got a special recognition to make to them and their coach Chad Painter and their other coaches. So, boys, come on down. We're gonna give you a presentation this evening. Hey, girls. There you go. Come on down this way. Just line up the girls in front of you, okay? Turn around so everybody can see you.
How cute.
All right, look at that. One face in the shoe, one wheel. All right, guys, tell me a little bit about your baseball team. What's your name? What's your team name?
The D.C. Six Yards.
All right, good. And I think y'all have won some games with you, didn't you?
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's the object of the whole thing. And so, here's what we're gonna do. We've got a certificate of recognition that says, "Congratulations to the City of Greer Six and Under All-Star Rookie League Baseball Team." It says that y'all are the champions of the 2019 Dixie Youth Rookie League State Tournament. Says you won the whole thing. And so, we are going to give you this certificate on this, the 27th day of August 2019, so that you can get one of your coaches and make everybody a copy, and everybody will have a copy of it that way that you can take home and hang on the wall. And the whole City of Greer says, "Congratulations to all of y'all for winning the championship, and we'll look forward to more coming in the future." How about that? Let's get these pictures. Let's stand up tall. And just go take some pictures. Everybody in the picture? There we go. All right. Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate it. Congratulations. There you go. Thank y'all for coming. I thought they were all here for your report, chief. Council, departmental reports are contained in your packet this evening. As always, department heads and/or Mr. Drakers will be glad to give you any information you need in regards to the July 2019 report. And Ms. Susan Howell will join us this evening for our financial report.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm here to present the financials as of July 31st, 2019. We'll start out with the general fund. The year-to-date revenue is $581,660. The expenditures are $2,883,31, which is right on target. Now, if you look at our dashboards where we actually compare the actual to benchmarks, you'll see that we do have a combined negative variance of $727,545, and I'll go back into that in just a few moments. The cash balance for the general fund is $162,221,700. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $212,274, with the expenditures of $3,725, and the cash balance of $1,424,805. The stormwater year-to-date revenue is $3,960,000. The expenditures are $120,599, and we have a cash balance of $1,639,474. And I do just want to point out that the negative variance that we have is a little unusual. There was a couple of things that happened this month that made it that way. We actually, one of our lease purchase payments, we actually made that early this month. We typically make it in July for payment due of August 15th. We paid that early, so that looks, that makes it look off $138,000. We actually, for our health benefit fund, we try to only use one month each year, each one month for expenses, and we've actually had to pull in two months for cash because our expenses for the health benefit fund have been higher this year. And then, there are the transfers for the street skate project of $20,000. And then, the biggest thing is this expense includes all of July payroll, which includes some payroll from June. So, there'll be eight days of payroll that are actually hitting here, and we'll pull back into June, and that will reduce our expenses in July. So, it will look better than that.
In the healthcare fund, you mentioned that transfer and typically doing that on a monthly basis. Is that sort of a zero-sum gain? I mean, do we just transfer over what we need by the month? Do we maintain a certain balance in there, or how do we do that?
What we try to do is just do, we just took the, what we think is gonna be the yearly amount that we're gonna pay out for this year and divide it by 12, and just make payments each month, so that our expenses will be fairly flat. But, what happens is that if we end up having a lot of claims, which we have been, we just go ahead and take the entire amount from the next payment to cover. But, we do wait until we need the funds to make something happen.
All right. Other? Thank you. Chief Hamby joins us this evening, and the chief is gonna bring us his activity report from the police department. Sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I was a little concerned about how to make a transition from the championship baseball team into going over my data, but I appreciate Susan's help on that a little bit. I appreciate the opportunity to review with you our July monthly report for 2019. We'll begin with the patrol division. We have been working for the last couple of months on a traffic enforcement blitz. We have typically called this, referred to it as the 100 Deadly Days of Summer. It typically runs from Memorial Day holiday through Labor Day holiday. So, we have ramped up our efforts in that regard, so we'll highlight a couple of numbers on that chart. Our citations increased 54% compared to the previous July of 2018, and our warning citations as well went up 44%. So, a very significant change there. One thing we have noticed, year-to-date, our arrests and our incident reports that we have responded to are on a decline from the previous year, as you can tell from the 12% reduction in police incident reports year-to-date. This is a representation of the geographic areas that our traffic collisions are occurring. We have seen a 5% increase, 4.5% increase of traffic collisions that we've investigated year-to-date in July of 19 compared to July of 18. Nothing new here. All of our collisions, or the majority of our collisions, are occurring on our major corridors such as US 29, South Buncombe Road, Highway 14, Highway 101, and Hammond Bridge Road, Brush Creek. Moving on to our detention center, as I mentioned, there has been a slight reduction in the incident reports that we've taken in arrest, so that number also reflects fewer people cycling through our detention center. Year-to-date, there is a 18% reduction thus far. I will note, though, those numbers can change as the year continues to progress. Summer is usually hit or miss, we're either very, very busy, or sometimes it's a little bit of a lull, and this July of this year, we have seen a slight lull. Yes?
If you don't mind, go back one second to that. Number transported to Greenville, I see that number is down a bit, which is good. Where do we stand in terms of our costs related to keeping prisoners at the detention center? Where are we on that?
We have budgeted pretty well for that. It is a huge expense for us. We pay about $54 per day per prisoner at Greenville Detention. The contract we have with Spartanburg Sheriff's Office at the Spartanburg Detention Center is, in my opinion, a much better agreement for us. They give us the first 10 days gratis before they begin to charge us for the prisoners being housed there, and most of our municipal prisoners are, they end up in Greenville Detention as compared to Spartanburg, so we do incur more cost that way. So, it's an expense we have to endure. We don't really have many options, so, but we have budgeted quite well, and we've been with under, we've been under our budget.
One more question if I could. I was covered by patrol, does that mean you have to pull somebody off of patrol to cover the detention center?
Yes. So, we've been watching that number for a few years. Our staffing over the years has increased from four detention officers, we're now at seven, and I have a goal to try to get that to eight, so that we would theoretically have two officers on duty at all times, working in the jail. Our staffing had, was a bit lower a couple of years back, so our patrol division has had to make up the difference. Now, that causes us a lot of extra work in a lot of different aspects because in order for our patrol officers to be qualified and legally certified to work in our jail, they have to acquire a whole nother level of certification at the academy. So, we're having to send our patrol officers not only to their basic law certification, which is 12 weeks at the academy, but we're also having to send them for a three-week jail certification course at the academy, and then they have to maintain 40 additional hours of in-service training each year. So, that is a big burden on our training activities and record-keeping, and I'm not sure if it's ever hurt our recruiting. I don't think it really has, but, you know, most agencies don't expect that out of their officers because most agencies don't have the jail that we do. So, we're getting mighty close to the point where we are not having to use police officers to work in the jail. I really do think it's a good idea to get away from that. A lot of the challenges of working in the jail are greater than they used to be, so if you're not doing that as your normal job, if you're doing it sort of something you rarely do, I believe you're opening yourself up for errors. And I believe our patrol officers would be much better used out on the road as well.
So, and I don't think they're related, but just a quick note from the slide before, maybe two before. I noticed that patrol miles was down 12%. Any reason for that?
Some of this is almost a guess, but we can just use, you know, some things that are obvious in front of us. We have had a significant amount of our officers are in the training phase, and so that's literally causing less car, which is more, less miles. So, there was a seven-month backup at the Criminal Justice Academy during 2018. We do believe there is a good fix in place now that just started, and so that should remedy that and unclog the system. So, we had officers that were waiting literally seven months from the point of hire until they were able to start the Criminal Justice Academy. So, with that and a little bit of extra turnover combined on top of that, we've had literally fewer officers working as we normally would. So, we're starting to see these officers finish their training now, and they're starting to come out on the road, so I think that's a phenomenon that we won't be experiencing beyond the next two or three months.
Thank you, Susan.
All right. Communication Center has been very busy. The police calls for service in July this year have increased 13% compared to the same period of last year. The fire service calls have increased by 60%, which brings the total dispatch calls increase of 21.4%. Year-to-date, those numbers are also continuing on for the whole period of the year. Our fire calls, I want to draw a note to that, have increased 113% as compared to the previous year-to-date. And I will remind everyone that we took on the dispatch services for Bulling Springs Fire Department and Taylor's Fire Department, so that explains fully the increase that we've seen. We have increased our staff, so we've been able to handle that quite nicely.
Chief, I was excited to get a tour of the new communication center and want to thank your staff for leading that. I know the men and women up there were very, very appreciative of the changes. That is something straight out of Star Wars up there now. I mean, that is one of the most incredible things I've ever seen is that new communication center.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I have a couple of pictures I'll share at the end here, but I will, since we're talking about it, I'll extend the invitation to all of you to, you can come by and check it out. You know, if you want to call me ahead of time, that's great. I'll make sure we take the garbage out first, but if you just want to pop in, that's fine too. They're really proud of that place.
They really are.
I mean, I literally can see the change on their face to those that are working in the room.
Yeah.
Our criminal investigation has assigned 35 cases for more extensive follow-up. There's a summary of those broken down, I won't go through the whole list, but year-to-date through July of this year, there has been an increase compared to 2018, and it goes back a four-year trend, so we have been seeing more cases assigned to our Investigations Division. We had, in July, we had our second group of our summer youth camp, and that is for middle-school-aged young folks. We had a total between the two weeks that we brought them in, we had a total of 22 attend our camp. Great group of kids, they got to experience a lot of things, a lot of hands-on stuff. As you can see, the top right, that photo shows them out there running some radar. They didn't write the tickets, but they got to run the radar and the laser. And on the bottom left, you'll see a field trip they took to the Criminal Justice Academy in Columbia, and they do an outstanding job down there with groups that are brought down for tours. They let them, on the picture on the bottom left, you can tell, they got to run the physical agility course in the warehouse they have there at the academy. And I believe on the top right there, you can see them, instructor going through some other tactics with them there. So, they had a really good time. Staffing report for the police department, we are authorized with 62 sworn officers and a part-time in-person. We have, with all of our administrative communications and detention, we are authorized for 89 full-time to part-time positions. We are in the process of hiring six people, three of those being telecommunicators, one police officer, one detention, and a administrative officer, or administrative personnel, that's our victim advocate. It was approved in this year's budget. So, two out of those six were new positions that we added in the new fiscal year. Wanted to update you on a project I made you aware of not too long ago. This has been going on for several months, but July, a lot of these things kind of came together, but our, we're combining our vice unit with all the others in Greenville County to form the Greenville County Multi-Jurisdictional Drug Enforcement Unit. Just to catch us back up to speed, it was an agreement entered with the 13th Circuit Solicitor's Office, the Greenville County Sheriff's Office, and all six municipalities in Greenville County. We're all combining all of our vice investigators into one unit. We hired a commander who is actually employed by the solicitor, and that involved receiving applications of over 20 people. We interviewed six, and we made a selection. That person's on staff, he's made a lot of progress in a two-week period of time. We've adopted a standard operating procedure manual, and a structure has been designed on how that unit will be broken up to address different areas of the county. And I'm happy to report today, it was the day number one of all of those personnel reporting to duty at their new posts. So, we're excited to see what this unit does to help with the apprehension of drug dealers in Greenville County. And we're not leaving out the Spartanburg County side of Greer because that agreement that we have put in place with our signatories as being a part of the agreement, that is also brought into the jurisdictional limits of the task force. So, all of Greer will be included, and one of our investigators is actually gonna be a team leader in that group, so we're represented quite well in this unit. Thursday of this week, we will have a presser over at the Greenville Law Enforcement Center to announce the formation of the unit to the media. And as we were speaking earlier of our communication center, here's a couple of photographs from different angles. So, the room's now, instead of the consoles kind of going on the perimeter of the room and different workstations throughout the different corners, we now have it centralized, so it sort of spans out from the middle. So, we had to do a lot of rewiring and complete new console furniture. Everything's motorized, it raises and lowers, the new flooring. So, we took out that 10-year-old carpet that had been used 24 hours a day. I think we cleaned it the last time it could possibly be cleaned, so it's, so we got a fresh coat of paint everywhere and putting new monitor panels on the walls. So, we're very, very proud of what we have here. I really encourage you to come check it out sometime, and it's one of the best things we've done in this year, I believe. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So, has the city seen an increase in the opioids, do you want some of that?
Yes, we have, and I would say 2018 was probably the year we had probably more. I'm not sure if we are just, I'm not sure if we're seeing an area-wide reduction, but I just don't, we're not seeing as many emergencies where people are overdosing and literally dying. We did begin the Narcan program last year, so all of our officers are equipped with Narcan, so they can revive anyone who is overdosing to the point they are unconscious. Our first responders are also equipped, so they probably are gonna be involved with that more likely than a police officer would. So, we haven't had to do as many of those as some of the other agencies because our fire department does respond so quickly for medical calls, so, but it's still an epidemic. We're still having issues across Greenville County, and people are still dying, so it's not going away, but we just hope that maybe with some controls that the federal government is doing, we hope, hopefully that's, hopefully we're seeing some effects there.
Other? Anything else?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your report.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Drakers, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. As school has begun and our children are back in our local schools, much of our summer programming has come into a conclusion, but we are rapidly preparing for an active fall season as well. A number of community things that are happening for us here in the area, continuing to use some of our resources. The Greer Chamber of Commerce will be hosting their Blues on the Green event. That is gonna be on Friday evening, September the 6th, here at City Park. Also, earlier in the day on September the 6th, Chamber will be hosting their first Friday luncheon. I call your attention to that. Our Lieutenant Governor will be speaking at that event that day, and if you would like to attend that and would like for us to make arrangements for you to do that, please just let us know, and we'll be glad to get those reservations made for you. We're very, very glad to be able to host our Lieutenant Governor here in the city as well as here in our facility. Couple of calendar items I want to make sure that you're aware of. Our Employee Benefits Fair is going to be on Thursday, September the 12th. That is from 7:30 a.m. until noon, and again, that is our annual Employee Benefits Fair information. I'm wondering if that's been handed out yet or not. So, in your mailboxes this evening is information that you will need for that benefits fair as well as we begin to approach October, our open enrollment period, so as we're beginning to get ready for all of that. We are excited about the opening of our Center for the Arts facility. There will be a private gala event, it's called Spotlight on the Arts Gala. That is the Friday evening of September the 20th. As I indicated earlier, we do have, we've made reservations for you to be able to attend that event. We will just need to know if you do indeed plan to do that. We have a couple of tickets reserved for each of you for that event on Friday evening. I've heard from a couple of folks, so if you can check your calendars and let us know, we would appreciate that. It will be, there will be a dedication ceremony on Saturday. That dedication ceremony will be taking place at 10:45. We'll have entertainment and activities in the park. Our Lieutenant Governor will be speaking at that event that day, and if you would like to attend that and would like for us to make arrangements for you to do that, please just let us know, and we'll be glad to get those reservations made for you. We're very, very glad to be able to host our Lieutenant Governor here in the city as well as here in our facility. Couple of calendar items I want to make sure that you're aware of. Our Employee Benefits Fair is going to be on Thursday, September the 12th. That is from 7:30 a.m. until noon. And again, that is our annual Employee Benefits Fair. Information, I don't know if that's been handed out yet or not, so in your mailboxes this evening is information that you will need for that Benefits Fair as well as we begin to approach October, our open enrollment period, so as we're beginning to get ready for all of that. We are excited about the opening of our Center for the Arts facility. There will be a private gala event. It's called Spotlight on the Arts Gala. That is the Friday evening of September the 20th. As I indicated earlier, we do have, we've made reservations for you to be able to attend that event. We will just need to know if you do indeed plan to do that. We have a couple of tickets reserved for each of you for that event on Friday evening. I've heard from a couple of folks, so if you can check your calendars and let us know, we would appreciate that. There will be a dedication ceremony on Saturday. That dedication ceremony will be taking place at 10:45. We'll have entertainment and activities in the park and in the facility from 11 a.m. until 4 p.m. that day. There'll be tours, balloon animals. We'll have some magic acts, inflatables, pottery demonstrations, origami demonstrations. They'll have open studios for our resident artists that will be there. Indoor and outdoor entertainment during the day, food and beverage will be available for purchase on the site. So a very active day on that Saturday, and we do hope you'll be able to join us on the 22nd for that, I'm sorry, the 21st. 20th is Friday, 21st on Saturday. And then again, on Sunday, we'll have tours available, and we're especially trying to welcome in the community to come in and see the facility there. But from 1 until 5 p.m., we'll be hosting tours on the hour, each hour of that new facility. So again, please mark your calendars. It's a wonderful event for us to showcase that beautiful new property. If you've not had the opportunity yet to go by and see it, it is almost completely done, and so we'll be putting the finishing touches over the next three weeks to get us prepared for the grand opening of our new Center for the Arts. Looking forward to that. And just as a calendar item for you to go ahead and put onto your to-do list, our Safety Breakfast is scheduled for Friday, October the 4th. Will start at 7:30 that morning. Usually runs for about an hour and a half on that Friday morning. Again, Friday, October the 4th, our Employee Safety Breakfast, that we will highlight successes during the past year, share safety information with our employees as well. So I hope that you'll be able to join us for that event.
Is that town a credit?
Uh... Sure!
It's October, you don't need to call it. Get cozyed.
Absolutely. Yes. Hope you can join us. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Before we move to items of old business, just wanted to thank Councilman Griffin. He is going to fill in for me this coming Thursday with Spartanburg County Mayor's Association meeting, where they will be discussing affordable housing initiatives that they are involved in and some other matters with the Spartanburg Housing Authority. So I appreciate your time and effort in that regard, and hopefully will bring us back some news as to what efforts that they have underway. With that, we will move to items of old business, the first of which is the follow-up on our discussion about Brookshire Road. Mr. Grant's got that information for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Council, as he said, this is a follow-up from your last meeting, where we discussed Brookshire Road, its condition, repair options, and dealing with possible cut-through traffic. But we did not vote on a path forward, so that's what we're here for this evening. With winter coming and paving season coming to a close around early November, I would recommend that we address the road immediately, and that so it doesn't have to sit through another winter of wet winter weather deterioration. I'd like to propose that we move forward with the road repair and widening with the CMRB repair option. We can get on the contractor's schedule for late September. Regarding traffic issues, Mr. Driggers is already working to schedule a meeting with BMW to discuss the traffic with them, and I have a plan to do a traffic study soon to get actual cut-through traffic, to see what we're actually experiencing out there. We can report that all back to you later, the results of our meetings and the study, either in person or a memo, whatever's necessary. The CMRB road repairs will be $144,000, $581.42. I would propose that we budget about additional $7,500 for signage or traffic calming, if that were to be, if we were to find that would be necessary. That would bring the budget to about $152,081. And then just adding some for contingency, I would just propose an even $160,000 for the budget to cover anything that may come up. The funding will be from our paving funds budget, and I will request matching funds from Spartanburg County CTC. I would note that this will not impact our regular paving resurfacing. That is still fully funded, just like it is every year, so this project will not impact that. Questions?
Counsel, question?
State, would you consider any use of concrete in front of those industrial entrances we actually discussed?
Um, no, sir. I haven't talked to the contractor about anything like that. I guess we could, we have to get with them, I guess, individually and look at it.
Well, I mean, if it's not beneficial, I guess we need to find out, because we don't need to throw good money at bad. But if it looks like it's, you know, it would be beneficial, then I think we definitely would consider it.
Right. We need to, I guess, research that, try to get that button up for late September. Yes, sir.
I know you recommend the one for $144,000, but what's the difference in the scope of work between the one that's $186 and the one that's $144?
Well, the full-depth patching method, they basically just go down both sides and saw-cut the edge of the existing bad pavement, and then basically build two shoulders and then pave the whole thing. So you've got really three separate pieces of pavement. You've got a shoulder, an existing, and a new shoulder. But the CMRB method, it's all ground up into one, and you've got one uniform base and one uniform surface, so it's not in three sections per se. So I think the overall product's going to be better that way. And it's actually cheaper, so it's a win-win.
Others? Counsel, this comes with action required. You've heard the recommendation of staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
And the second floor is open for discussion?
Just please make sure that we do look at all alternatives or options as far as those entrances. And then, I know you said you would, the traffic and calming, if that's necessary to reduce.
Yes, sir. We'll get back to that before we do anything. Yes, sir. My gut feeling is we're not going to go that route, but I just got it in there just in case.
We do already have scheduled conferences with both BMW and with Inland Port.
Mr. Grant, if I'm not mistaken, currently in that lower section, there's only one commercial entrance, I believe.
Right. Well, it's the same, I think it's the same.
Same business.
Concrete Connection, I think is the name of the company there. They have side-by-side parcels in that lower section.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Just for clarity, the motion is for the $160,000 with the contingencies and the traffic calming piece?
Yes, that's the recommendation.
Gotcha.
We can amend it if we need to, if there's any change.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the first reading of ordinance number 30-2019. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Pendon Properties LLC located at 306 West Pointset Street from OD Office District to DRD. Mr. Matt Mahan brings us information in that regard this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Ordinance 30-2019 is a rezoning request for a property located at 306 West Pointset Street to rezon from OD Office District to DRD. This is the current zoning map highlighted in red. You will see the property is on OD. Next to it is Woods Mortuary, is on C2. The future land use map, this property lays within residential land use T, land use 2 among a resident, or a negative corridor. This is the current street view. This is kind of the site plan that the owner is proposing. You will see within the layout, the current layout shows the office space that is in the rear, and it is currently used all as office with the proposed. He is proposing to add a kitchen, dining room, and a one-bedroom apartment. And this is just kind of an overview of the top view of the first floor, showing both sides. The right side, which is closest to Woods, would have the one-bedroom. The side closest to the Greek Law Firm, that would continue to be used as office space. The second floor is also office space. The owner is requesting to convert some of the office space on the first floor on the right side of the building into a one-bedroom apartment. The remainder of the building will continue to serve as professional office space. The exterior of the building will not change, and all work will take place on the interior. He will have to meet building code, in which that could require a fire suppression system, but that will be determined once building plans are submitted if this gets rezoned. Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 19th and made a recommendation to approve the rezoning request. That is all the information I have at this time, but we'll be happy to answer any questions.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Any additional information or more information at this time you'd like to present? Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 30-2019. So have a motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Is there any other DRD on Pointset?
There are no other DRDs on Pointset. The way our zoning is worked out, our traditional zoning does not allow for a mixed-use DRD as his only option to allow this type of use.
So it just kind of allows you to have those kind of a...
It allows you to have the mixed-use of residential and kind of a commercial aspect in one building.
Gotcha. That's a good idea.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the first reading of ordinance number 30-2019. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties owned by Renewed Properties LLC and K&amp;L Investments located at 117 and 119 Brown Street from R12 to DRD. Mr. Matt Mahan?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 30-2019, as you said, is a rezoning request to rezon the parcel on Turner Street from R1 to R2. The purpose of this rezoning is to eventually subdivide the parcel into four individual single-family lots. This is the current zoning, showing that it is R1. It is in a future land use residential 3 community. Here is the street view there at Turner and King. And this is just for reference, this is kind of what they're proposing to subdivide lots into. The majority of the lots will face Turner Street with the one lot that will have access to King. Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 19th and made a recommendation to approve the rezoning request. That is all the information I have at this time, but we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 30-2019 for discussion. So have a motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion. By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Would you like to address, Counsel, sir?
I'd just like to thank you for, for this, I'm here, and also, really, for the service of the community. So I'm here, and also, yeah, you're in the direction, so I appreciate you for the service. Mr. Perry Dennis has been a stranger to this process. He sat on this side of the table for a number of years, and we thank him for his service to the city and now to the community as he works with some folks that are doing multifamily and affordable housing in our community and are doing a good job of it, and I appreciate their efforts, and so thank you, sir, for your efforts in that regard.
Others? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing on, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we have one stated item for discussion in executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion as we enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to Project Greer Mill as allowed by state statute, section 30-4-70A5.
That comes as a motion to hear a second. Any discussion in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
All right, Counsel. In executive session, we considered one matter that was an economic development matter pertaining to the project Greer Mill as allowed by state statute 30-4-70A5. Do you hear a motion to come out of executive session? Some move?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
All right, Counsel. In executive session, we considered one matter that was an economic development matter pertaining to the project Greer Mill as allowed by state statute 30-4-70A5. Do you hear a motion to come out of executive session? Some move?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
All right, Counsel. In executive session, we considered one matter that was an economic development matter pertaining to the project Greer Mill as allowed by state statute 30-4-70A5. Do you hear a motion to come out of executive session? Some move?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
All right, Counsel. In executive session, we considered one matter that was an economic development matter pertaining to the project Greer Mill as allowed by state statute 30-4-70A5. Do you hear a motion to come out of executive session? Some move?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
All right, Counsel. In executive session, we considered one matter that was an economic development matter pertaining to the project Greer Mill as allowed by state statute 30-4-70A5. Do you hear a motion to come out of executive session? Some move?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we have one stated item for discussion in executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion as we enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to Project Greer Mill as allowed by state statute, section 30-4-70A5.
That comes as a motion to hear a second.